All right, good evening. It's Tuesday, November 27, 2018. Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:00. Four items listed on the agenda. We have five board members present and two absent. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. Are there any public comments? All right. So, next is the approval of board meeting minutes. Approval of October 23, 2018, November 5, 2018, and November 13, 2018 minutes. Are there any changes to those? Okay, then they stand as presented. Approval of October 23, 2018, November 5, 2018, and November 13, 2018, closed session minutes. Those stand as presented. Okay. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Then I need a motion for the consent agenda, please.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Items A through E as presented.
I second.
Motion by John, second by Margaret. You can call the vote. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio? Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. Motion passes. Next is superintendent's agenda. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Elmhurst. There will be no action taken tonight on that item. So we will move to item B, approval of donations from Lincoln, Edison, Emerson, Fisher, and Jefferson.
So four elementary schools have requested the approval of a donation by their respective PTAs for the use of a program called Brain Pop. This is a program that was not supported by the Learning and Teaching Department this year for various reasons, but some schools have decided that they would like to continue to use this until the tech committee finishes its work of making some formal recommendations about exactly what resources are the best resources to support our new ELA curriculum. And we are moving toward different models of instruction. And also, we have are trying to move toward more open resources and take a look at resources in a different type of way than we have in the past. And so, in an effort to bridge the recommendation of the technology committee for one year, some of the PTAs have decided that they would like to continue to support this in their school. So that is the first part of that donation. The second part, for Emerson, is for the leveled readers that we have been moving toward as part of the new ELA curriculum, as well as materials for their Makerspace at the school, which they call the Innovation Station. So those are the two main items on the list for approvals, and we would recommend that you accept those gifts.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donations from Lincoln School PTA, Edison School PTA, Jefferson School PTA, and Fisher School PTA for subscription to Brain Pop in the amounts of $2,395, $1,975, $1,800, and $2,500 respectively. And the donation from the Emerson School PTA for instructional materials in the amount of $6,687.52. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy number 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Discussion?
We want to thank all of the school PTAs, Lincoln, Edison, Jefferson, and Fisher, for helping with the subscription to the Brain Pop in this interim time. I know that I'm part of the tech committee, I'm the board rep on that, and that was something that the certified staff was asking, can we continue that? Because it's, they like it, the students like it, and it's really good for instruction. So, thank you.
And I'd like to thank the Emerson PTA for a very generous donation of $6,687, which they reused from their recent book fair, which had to be a fantastic book fair, to go through those instructional materials at Emerson.
I just wanted to ask a question. We see these Makerspace donations coming in. Can you articulate, like, is there a framework that schools are, you know, like, I guess, what is the administration doing to sort of oversee what's being donated, that it's consistent in any way?
I asked Dave Beatty, our Director of STEM, to provide for me and the rest of the administration some sample prototype Makerspace recommendations for various grade level spans, so that we can have consistency at our schools, and so that we can, if there are foundation requests or PTA requests that come in, we can have some parameters for what we believe actually support our programs and support true innovation and other types of 6C-related types of learning activities. And I am expecting that soon, because we also want to coordinate that and build that into the work when we start planning the new spaces for the buildings and the renovations that are going to occur across the district. So, we are expecting to have something from him soon that we can use to guide, because typically, in the spring, we start to get a lot of requests for donations, and we want to have that in advance of that, and also on the front end of our planning for any of the future designs that go into the major work at the buildings.
So, I think, just to give you a little context, one of the reasons why, right now, all of our Makerspaces don't look exactly the same is, we are still very much in the learning and trying out phase. So, as our LMC directors go to different professional learning opportunities and see things, some buildings will try one thing, some buildings will try another. So we're still, I think, in that risk-taking and experimental stage of what really is going to be the best sort of prototype across the district.
So then are you, then are they ever getting together? Are you collaborating in a way that, you know, it's like, oh, this is really successful, this isn't, this was, you know?
Yes, they are a highly collaborative group, and do come together and share ideas. Mark, actually, Dr. Cohen oversees and works with that group on a regular basis, so he can even expand on that.
Several of them have gone on some site visits to different schools, and it's not just at the K-5 grade level. We've also, Erica Drum and I drove all the way up to Antioch to see their Makerspace. They just redid their media space and created a room off of their library where they have three, everything from old-school cardboard and paint and newspaper, you know, for making different models, to a drill press, 3D printers. And so, as we move forward in terms of what a Makerspace looks like, all those things are under consideration.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. The motion passes.
All right. Next is the approval of onboarding proposal.
So, we have been looking for ways to improve efficiencies at the district office level that help more effectively support the buildings. And we've elicited a lot of feedback from the principals. And at the district office, we've had a lot of antiquated systems, a lot of manual work, a lot of disjointed types of things that have gone on as it relates to bringing people on board into the district when we hire them, just because of staffing and systems-related types of things that we have been addressing, and we've been taking input and feedback from the principals to try to figure out what we can do to best help serve them better. And this particular proposal is a way to integrate the initial hiring process in a way that streamlines it, makes it less cumbersome, and also helps the principals be able to monitor and function a lot better when it comes to having to fill their vacancies in a timely manner in the spring. So that's kind of the general philosophical piece. Specifically, if you have questions, I can either have Jim give a few more introductory comments, or could handle those during the discussion phase.
All right. A motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the ongoing proposal presented at a one-time conversion fee of $2,000 and an annual cost of $13,262.
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
So, my question, can we get some background in terms of the efficiency? I know Dave mentioned this, efficiency based of what we have now and currently what this new system will look like.
What we've been doing for long before I got here, the onboarding process incorporated about 45 minutes to an hour with an employee that came in. And while we went through forms and paperwork, we basically sat and watched them fill out paperwork while they sat there at the onboarding table. And that is not a requirement that would be a part of this new process. The new process would take and put all of those forms online. The applicant would be given access to those forms, and they must complete their application packet after being recommended for hire, at which point then they would come into the district office with those forms completed digitally. So it creates a digital footprint package for each new hire that comes onboard. And then they would come in and meet with us, so we would still have a face-to-face piece to welcome them to the district and have an opportunity to get wet signatures on a couple of forms that are required by law, to have a wet signature, not a digital signature. And then we would be able to answer any questions for them at that time, fingerprint them, which we still require, obviously. And then they would be done. So we could actually then send an HR notification out once the fingerprints come back. And principals will have access directly to where their applicants are online in the process, so that they can actually see where they are in case they need to make a phone call to say, you haven't finished this, or you haven't finished that, you need to get that done and taken care of. But all forms would have to be completed, so we're not waiting on the backend for them to come back with their paperwork. But we would still maintain that personal connection with the employee as they go through the onboarding process. But they would have to complete all of those forms online before moving to the next step.
One additional question. Thank you very much. This information, will it, so it'll be, it'll be permanent information, will it somehow be able to be integrated in their existing HR record?
Yes, actually it will. It's going to be building a digital file for them, so that all of that will be stored digitally. We are in the process currently, over the next few years, we started last year with the tech department digitizing all files. We started with the student records at York. We will be moving that process over here. All current hard copy files for personnel will be converted over to digital files, and we will now have a digital file, and this information will be incorporated within that. So we have one file for a digital footprint for each employee, and everything is tracked, and they will have access to that as well.
And all of this is included in this system and the annual cost?
The digitizing of existing records is part of a separate project, that is not a part of this. This is the building of the digital file for hiring, and will become a part of that digital record that is being worked on through Conica Minolta.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. Motion passes.
Okay. Superintendent's Communication, Freedom of Information Act request.
So we've had four. One requesting documents related to the facility's master plan and referendum, which was granted. One requesting a specific video, which was granted. One requesting specific contract information, which was granted. And one requesting specific opinion poll information, which was also granted. And then, the final portion of my report is in Bev's hands here with the tweet of the week.
Well, it is actually a post of the week. This was actually posted on Facebook. One of the challenges during the holiday time is continuing engagement. Most people go on vacation, and they're not really thinking about, unfortunately, about D-205 during their vacation. So one of our challenges as a communications department is how do you continue to help people think about the schools? So we issued a challenge on snow day to post your favorite pics to our families and tell us how you spent your snow day. So this is actually one from Facebook that kind of represents the general feeling, kids out in the snow really enjoying their time. And it goes to a Kim Whitney for posting this wonderful photograph. And if you go onto any one of our pieces of social media, Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, you can see the collection and the montage from that entire time. Thank you.
For doing those, those posts were cute this week. Okay. Board Communications, does anybody have any? Jim?
It's 5 to 8. Come on. I got a lot of stuff to talk about. We can't get out of here before 11:00. I did have two things that I just quickly wanted to talk about. I was remiss at our last meeting when I was invited to add something to Dave's report about the Innovation Committee that I've been asked to serve on. So I just wanted to make up for that. And this is a very interesting project that we're involved in. First of all, there's only 40 districts in the entire United States that have been invited to participate, run by two gentlemen, Ray McNulty and Todd Daggett. One was the State Superintendent for Education in Vermont, the other, the State Superintendent for Education in New York. And Dave helped me on which one also worked for the Gates Foundation.
That was Ray.
It was Ray McNulty, okay. And what's interesting is they point out that, you know, here we're trying to achieve 20th-century learning techniques. And they point out that, really, if you look at high school, you know, the amount of time kids sit in a chair and learn different subjects are actually called Carnegie units, because Andrew Carnegie was asked to sit on a Harvard committee at the end of the 18th century. And, no, the end, I'm sorry, yes, the end of the 19th century. I get my centuries confused, but thank you, thank you. You're right, the end of the 19th century, and then finally, by 1906, the beginning of the 20th century. Is that right, Jen? Okay, thank you. You know, they came up with these Carnegie units, and that's the, and they stand today. That's the reason our kids have to have so many units of social studies and so many units of math to graduate from high school. And I think Carnegie was really trying to train good factory workers, and we're trying to launch people into knowledge careers. And really, not much has changed. And so Ray and Todd point out that, don't expect substantial change to be led by universities. Don't expect it to come from the State Board of Education. To come up with any new, successful practice that teaches our kids in better ways has to come from school districts that frankly break the rules. And as they point out, policy change is not coming until school districts can prove there's a better way to do it. Policy will only follow successful practices. And I think that is, you know, the single greatest insight that I've gotten from serving on this committee so far, but it's absolutely true. I mean, we are, high school hasn't changed since 1906. And that's just a shame, because the world changed in 2005 when the smartphone came out. And we have got to adapt to the new world that we're in. And so I think it's terrific that 205 has been asked to be one of these 40 districts that Ray and Todd are pushing to come up with new and innovative ways to teach our children. So that was one. Oh, it's still before 8:00. And then the other thing, oh, thank you, Jen. The other thing that I just want to do a quick report out on is, one session that I attended at the State School Board Convention last weekend was a co-presentation by Max McGee, the former State Superintendent of Education here in Illinois. And then, most recently, he was the Superintendent of the Palo Alto California School District. And I think it's probably hard to find a school district in the country that is more affluent, has more smart, well-educated parents, who probably couldn't push their kids any harder. And he had quite a few insights, but this was basically a session about behavioral and mental health. And so he co-presented with the Lake Forest High School District, who got into this because they lost three students within a four-month period. All three of those students stepped in front of freight trains. So, they recognized that there was a problem in the Lake Forest community, and there is a problem in, I think, every, just every school district that has a high school. And I think it goes down to middle school as well. The pressures that society has placed these kids under, what was exceptional performance a generation ago is average today. So we push our kids harder and harder to get into the best schools. So a few things that both Lake Forest and Max McGee pointed out, as ways that they're dealing with the same problem, in somewhat slightly different ways. You know, they've said, no more AP classes for freshmen, no more cell phones in class. In Palo Alto, they went to a 10-minute passing period, so the kids could actually ask their teachers questions at the end of class, or straighten out things about late assignments, et cetera. They didn't have to track those teachers down later. They went to an 8:25 a.m. start time, and they adopted a policy called See Something, Say Something. In other words, kids looking out for their friends, and helping identify when somebody's having a problem. In both districts, they said the common denominator of these problems is sleep deprivation. One of the ways Lake Forest is dealing with this, this is a 1,600-student high school, they recognize that their social workers and psychologists were spending the vast majority of their time with the special ed population, so they hired three more social workers and three more psychologists. Lake Forest teaches a class, a full-year class, freshman year, it's a health class called Health and Wellness for Life, where they try to deal with just the things that kids should know before they try to do something desperate. Lake and Will Counties, and we should, this is something we should see if DuPage has, has something called Text-a-Tip. You can text to a live clinician, who will give you counseling via text, and clearly, if they think you're at risk, they'll get your name, your phone number, your email address, whatever it takes to intervene. They, Lake Forest put together a Community Wellness Task Force to increase community awareness. They put together something called Lead Program, so they're ahead of us. And I think this is something that Dave wants to address within the Innovation Committee as well. And so, you know, I just think that, you know, if we were to lose one more kid and do nothing to get in front of this problem, that that's on us. So, that's, you know, I think this is a crucial problem in every school district, not just here, not just Lake Forest, not just Palo Alto. But it's something clearly we need to get in front of. So, now it's only slightly after 8:00.
I do want to, as long as we are already past 8:00, the whole thing's blown. I do want to say that, we became aware of Text-a-Tip. John actually recommended that from somebody that told him about it. And we looked into it internally, and of course, there was a cost factor. And we actually got to the point where we got the local Kiwanis Club was going to support this, and by about the week before we got the Kiwanis Club to commit to this, the organization doubled its cost, and so we were back for looking for a way to pay for this. But since that time, we investigated, Kathy and Jim had been looking into this. The high school is not satisfied with our current system, so we actually started looking into this a while ago. And they found out that the way a lot of these other districts are affording it is through the county ROEs. And so at the last, I'm on Darlene Superintendent Advisory Committee, and at the last meeting I attended, I recommended that we look into this, and so I'm going to continue to push that we think about that system county-wide. And I guess if that doesn't materialize, we can look internally and ask some questions and see if we think we want to do that. But yes, I know Kara saw Max, and did we have some other board members at the, Karen, didn't you see a similar presentation by Max earlier in the fall?
Yeah, I'm thinking of the other Max.
Yeah.
Our Max.
Yeah. And so, yes, that's a topic that he has taken, taken that to heart certainly. So, we, the thing that I like about this is that it's very interesting, when you think of innovation, you usually think of something related to tech. But what we learned is that, through the research, the most innovative districts that they're seeing across the country focus, have three main things in common, and one of the three is a focus on behavioral health. And I think that we, one of the things that I feel that we have a good opportunity to make a dent in this, is that I actually have had, parents are coming to me and basically saying, you know, we need to do something. And so I think that that gives us a good chance- And so, I think that that gives us a good chance to do something that's very comprehensive, community-wide, similar to some of the things you talked about with Lake Forest. So, I definitely agree, and we're looking to make that a priority moving forward.
I also remembered as you were talking, the first thing Lake Forest did was they took stock of all these services available to them throughout their community, not just provided by the school district, but county-wide and mental health opportunities, you know, throughout their community. Also, the thing that Max McGee pointed out is, you know, after he reduced the number of AP classes kids could take, you know, had a later start time, went to block scheduling a 10-minute passing period, et cetera. He said, you know, "The interesting thing is, we now send the same amount of kids to the Ivy League, the same amount of kids to Tier One universities that we did before there was all this pressure in our school." So, he says, "The one thing that changed is our football team wins more games." So, whether there's a correlation there or not, that's something we could use as well.
I, you know, at the Superintendent Coffee at Churchville, just what, a month ago? This was the topic that parents wanted to talk about, really, was stress with, you know, their kids. And if you have high schoolers right now, you know what that's like. And I think we have an opportunity in the new year to lead the conversation and get the community involved, because it's a conversation, just like you're saying, that involves the community, not just us, not just, you know, it has to be everybody, so. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, Karen?
I have a question, and it's a bigger picture question about, I know that we have a health curriculum, and I know that some of it is dictated on what we cover, but, you know, health is lifestyle, and includes all these things. So, I guess my question is not necessarily to get a response right now, not unless you have it, but how do we incorporate all this? It's a lifestyle. You know, it's not just the physical education, you know what I mean? It's the whole, you know, the sleep, and diet is supposed to be just what are you choosing to eat, you know what I mean? We have changed that to, you know, some weight loss sort of thing versus the true definition, which is to pay attention to. Are you eating healthy? Are you sleeping? Are you, you know what I mean? Are you asking for help? You know, building those friendships where you can share things and you have safe space. And I think that's all, that's truly the health education.
So, if any of our learning and teaching, or Kathy, want to elaborate, certainly, I would encourage them to do so. But, that's why, what you're suggesting is why I am, believe that we need to talk about this as more of a comprehensive approach. You know, we can talk about social, emotional learning standards at the various different grade levels and make sure that we are incorporating those into the curriculum, which we should do. And we can, we could talk about homework policies, and we can talk about various different things in isolation, but I think that the key is that we have to talk about this as a holistic conversation about how we approach this. And we are already, you know, working on trying to do some of these things. Obviously, we don't just, you know, completely disregard them, but I think that, I think that we have to, we have to move some of these things a little bit more to the front burner, but I really, I like the idea of trying to take an approach that comes at it from a lot of different places and isn't just kind of a cursory thing like, "Oh, see, we teach this in health class now," or whatever. So, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but...
I was waiting for an opportunity, thank you. The piece about the health curriculum, just, you know, succinctly, not definitely, you know, necessarily my area, but it really overlaps. And there is that incorporated into every year that they're having health. There is like a social, emotional wellbeing piece of it. I think what Dr. Moore is talking about is we're all recognizing that need to come at it from multiple levels. And if you let our social workers, you know, have all the time of the world with our staff, they would have no problem helping our staff. And our staff has been asking for more of that. Just as an example, this year, like, all of our elementary schools took on calm classroom training, and it's a very simple technique incorporated school-wide, you know, minimally twice a day. If you can get twice a day, there's really good evidence supporting that. And it's similar to mindfulness, and we've just finished, like, the first stage of it, and we trained a social worker, each elementary social worker with another colleague, a teacher, they did the training with the staff. And some of our staff have kind of dipped their toe in the water prior. A couple of the schools have done the first survey and very positive feedback from the teachers. There's information about moving that up into the secondary level. There's certainly an interest there from our secondary teachers. That's an example of one thing. Done some parenting things over the course of the school years with our social workers leading those. And when we get into the school anxiety and school avoidance thing, there's certainly a high parent interest. That's one of the areas, when we look at our services, that we've expanded, talking about expanding social work services. We have shifted some of our FTE within the department to social workers. And I know that if given the opportunity, people would ask for more in that regard, because there is such a need. Not, you mentioned something, Jim, about the time of the social workers and psychologists can be eaten up through the special ed aspect of it. I would say that we have a pretty good balance of our social workers working with students who are not identified, but we're certainly seeing the impact of some of those things. In particular, at York, there's kind of a pretty clear definition of which social workers are servicing, students that have that as a part of an individual education program, as well as just students that are needing that additional support. And when you think about the team approach for York SSS, there is a social worker and a psychologist that are attached to each, each level. So, there's very much systemic things in there too, and we find the kids, we know who they are, and they seek us out too. But, there's always that interest in looking at things from a broader perspective, which we're excited to do.
Anything else? Karen?
All right, one last thing, when you brought up the Churchville conversation, and the parents, you know, were concerned at the high school level. I guess, you know, we've had this conversation, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, and I just want us to be very mindful of how we look at homework. You know, we can't have no homework policy at one level and then quite extensive homework policy at another because you've got to transition the students. So, I really want us to be mindful of the transitioning. Like, you know, as you grow, you know, you're more responsible for things, so I don't think you should go to no to nothing, especially elementary. I mean, you've got to read every day, you know, you've got to do some math, you know, skills. Anyway, so, I just, I'm throwing that out there.
So, if I could just add to that, Karen, our kids in elementary, they do read every day. That is, that is an expectation. What you don't see going home in elementary are all kinds of worksheets for kids to complete. Yep. And as, one of the things that is a natural outgrowth of shifting to standards-based reporting is really looking at every learning activity you provide to kids, and that includes the work you put in front of them, and how is it attached to standards? And what meaningful information are you gleaning from that to help inform learning and instruction? So, as we roll standards-based reporting up to sixth grade next year, and that's something I'll be reporting on at our December meeting, we're going to see that conversation start to shift to the middle school as well.
Start of a really good conversation. All right. I know, right?
Okay, so, we have upcoming meetings, and there's going to be a special board meeting on Tuesday, December 11th at 6:30 to discuss next steps after the referendum, future planning. That will be here in District 205 Center. There's regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, December 18th at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. And then, Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, 7:30 here at District 205 Center, and Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, 7:30 here in District 205 Center. So, if there's nothing else, I will call the meeting adjourned, 8:17.